Okay, good evening, everybody. I would like to welcome you to the May 2nd work session legislative meeting of the North Hill School District. If you would all rise for a moment of silence and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of America. One nation, one God, and one nation in the great God of our history. For liberty and justice for all.
I'll give our standing room only crowd a few minutes to get their seats here. Okay, I just want to let everybody know that we held an executive session this evening prior to the public meeting to discuss personnel and legal matters. And so at this point, we are going to move on to board member comments, if anybody has any. Ellie?
I have one.
Yeah, just-
Kathy, just a minute, Ellie's gonna go, and then we'll take your turn.
I just wanted to mention, we had- can Kathy hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. We had received an email as a board from a parent with safety concerns after there was a recent accident at a Westview bus stop. And this parent had requested that the board consider doing a bus audit, and I wanted to know, you know, if we could discuss that idea. I personally would be in favor of taking a look at some of the issues.
It's already set up and ready to go.
Great.
Mr. Muth and Mr. Jones are gonna work on that, and once we get into the June area, as we look to prepare the bus stops and routes for next school year.
Okay, if we could provide a formal response to that parent that emailed us, then, Ed? Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Can one of you guys take care of that tomorrow?
Thank you.
Mrs. Reed-
When you're speaking, it's getting choppy.
Okay, you can just tell her, we're in the microphone, so-
They're in microphones, Kathy, so doing the best.
Okay.
Kathy, did you have a board comment?
Yes, I do. I wanted to thank, what's her name, Uncle Brain Dead, Mrs., anyway, the one who sent us the letter in regard to the bullying and her, the parents' concerns about their children both being punished. And I, someone had called me over a few months back, and I promised them I would bring it to the table, and needless to say, I had to go get sick and haven't been at the meetings. So I was glad she brought that to our attention again. And I would like Mrs. Kuzera to, look, there is a policy I saw, 245, which is bullying, but I couldn't pull it up to read it on my computer today, but I would like Mrs. Kuzera to bring that to the table, that we can discuss this.
Yeah, thank you, Kathy, actually. I responded to that parent who wrote to us as well, and basically, I would also like to look through the policies. I read that policy, and I'm not sure, I'd like to read the policies a little bit in more detail, both that bullying one and some of the other ones about dealing with discipline at the schools, to see if the way that we are interpreting punishment at the schools is really consistent with the policies as they're written. I'm hoping that, over the summer, I can, you know, help organize a policy committee meeting, and that's something that I would really be interested in, in making sure that we are interpreting correctly and sort of ironing out any issues that are associated with that. So I'm glad that you mentioned that, and thank you very much for teeing that up, because, yeah, I'm really interested in working on that issue to make sure everybody's treated fairly. I think that was the issue that the parent that emailed us really had, was not that the kids are getting punished for things that have happened, but that they are not being punished according to what happened, you know, like what actually occurred at the school. So, you know, I, obviously, it's, there's a he said, she said element to it, but to the extent we can, you know, formalize all that with our policies and our handbooks, I'm definitely really interested in doing that. So, thanks very much.
Thank you for agreeing to bring it to the table. I do know, it's difficult, and I, unlike you, I like to see all children being punished equally, you know? Not one against the other.
Right.
And I don't know how everybody else feels. There was one time, years ago, my son's old now, well, he's 35, he's not that old. He come home from school, and he was crying, and he said, "Mom, this boy pushed me in school, and he said bad things to me," and I got upset. I says, "Listen, he pushes you, you push him back." He said, "I'm getting trouble." I said, "We'll deal with that when it comes." I don't know, but I always told my kids, "Somebody hits you, you hit them back," you know? But I guess that's not the proper thing to do anymore.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed.
Okay.
Are there any other comments?
One thing I wanted to mention is, a parent contacted me about the snack pack that is available at the elementary schools, and I did have some comments about that, but I was gonna wait until after the presentation that we're seeing tonight to ask them as part of that. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Sandy.
Okay.
Anybody else? Any other comments? Okay, do we have anybody signed up to speak to the board on the agenda items only? Sorry, I didn't check the list. Okay. If those of you that want to, when you get there, would you please list your name and address for the record, and then we'll go from there?
Deanna Philpott, 29 Chapel Drive, 15237. I am speaking in support of the updates to the snack and party celebration policy. I think that it was our wellness committee's greatest success this year. I really want to thank all the principals, they did a great job, and really seemed to take the concerns of the parents on the committee seriously when we said that we needed more consistency among all the ways, all the places that the policy was put. So I think it's a really great step forward. So I think the policy does four things. It makes the guidelines clear for families who need to, you know, learn more about the snack policy or lead the parties. So it's very clear what we're, what we are now allowed and not allowed to bring. It's consistent among all the schools, and the principals say it's gonna be consistent among all of the handbooks, and PTSO, and PTO, and PTA letters. It's going to help us reduce our obesity numbers by the focus on health. You know, with our 29% of kids who are overweight or obese in our district, we're not so far below the national average of 33 that we can just kind of not worry about it. I think it's still, needs to be an issue that we're always worried about. And I think the number one thing to keep in mind is that this makes sure that it is, that our policies are inclusive for all kids with allergies. You know, the fruits and vegetables, the items that are brought in as a special item have to be prepackaged with the ingredients listed, and the parents still have to check with the teachers to make sure that they are meeting any allergy requirements. So, you know, I know that this can be a hard thing for districts to tackle, you know, there are, I was even, I was contacted by a parent who is concerned that the kids can't bring in things for their birthdays, but, you know, I think that it's also, that policy is inclusive of kids of lower income, that their parents can't afford to bring in a little present for 22 kids. So I think it's important that we remember those things, and I ask the board to vote on the policy updates as they are. I think it's a really great thing that we did. And then, I just want to quickly state two things in regards to wellness in general. So, it is always fun to jump into tackling goals, right, like this celebration policy and the snack policy. But I'd have two recommendations for our wellness committee moving forward next year, before we pick another goal to work on that's, you know, I'd love to see us work on recess, for example. But I would love to see us work on two things. The first one would be community involvement. I really think that it's important that we start opening our wellness committee meetings to the public, letting people come, letting them speak. I know there are lots of parents in our district that care about this issue a lot, and would even like to join. So I think the decision to make our committee small might need to be revisited to see, you know, we can make rules, maybe we don't want to have 100 people on it, but I think, you know, there are parents out there who are really passionate and have been disappointed to know that they can't join our wellness committee. I would like us to start our meetings with a discussion of any emails that have come in from parents about wellness. Maybe that means that we need to have a wellness committee specific email address, so that we are discussing concerns that come in as a committee. And then, second, I'd like us to make sure that our wellness committee is following best practices. The first, you know, there are, there are standard steps that wellness committees should follow when they are going to start making changes in their district. The first is to, well, the first is to form a committee, which we've done, and the second, across the board, is for committees to do an assessment, so that you know your strengths and weaknesses, before you start creating action plans and working on goals. I would love to see us do all of the free assessments that exist out there, from the CDC, and all the organizations, the Department of Ed has an assessment, and I've offered, I've offered a couple of times to lead us through those, and have been told no. So I would just like to ask again, that at the beginning of the year before our wellness committee does any work, that we really assess what we're, how we're doing. Just get a list of strengths and weaknesses, which we can then use to create a formal action plan that will lead our committee through picking our goals, tracking our progress, and leading us to do this annual report at the end of the year to actually see how we did.
Thank you, Deanna.
You're welcome.
Any other, okay. It looks like, any solicitors report this evening? Thank you. And it looks like, did Olaf and Grace, did they quit? It's May, right? They all got a-
Yeah, they did quit.
They quit, okay.
They're busy, they're busy too.
I'm just kidding, I'm sure, they're good, I'm sure they got something else, that's fine. Okay, the next will be our presentation of the food service and wellness, Mrs. Lindsay Radman, if you have the, you have the floor.
I just handed to Jeff copies of our school meals survey results, so there's one for everybody, and I'll be discussing that briefly here in just a minute. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to share some brief updates with you on our programs, including school breakfast, lunch, morning care, and some of our wellness initiatives. Okay, I wanted to start off this evening with some data on our programs. First of all, lunch, of course, most obviously. We feed about 2,450 students for lunch every day, and we pulled this data from March 2019. Comparatively to last year at this time, we were feeding about 80 more students per day, so just this school year, we've seen an increase in our lunch participation of about 3% to 4% per day on average. So that is good news for us. In breakfast, you can see our chart there, we feed about 630 students every single morning for breakfast. Compared to showing, demonstrating the last three years meal participation, we're up about 200 meals per day versus just two years ago. So, a lot of this has to do with the introduction of our Grammy Good Breakfast Card at the middle school, but we are, we've seen a 31% increase in daily breakfast served. Talking a little bit about pricing, we still charge $2,50 per day, all grade levels, and we've been able to hold this price for, this will be upcoming the eighth straight school year, so that's good news. And again, we'll speak about the survey in just a moment, but we questioned community members on the survey if price was an important consideration, and 82% did respond that reasonable prices were somewhat too extremely important to them. So we've been able to avoid the mandated price increase due to the financial standing of our food service account. Morning care. So I'm sure everybody knows that we have a before-school childcare program that exists, but what you may not be aware of is that the program is actually run by the food service department, and this is very unique. So it was initially designed to make the breakfast program reliable, but it's enabled us to really be able to offer a great service to our families at a very reasonable price. So the cost is $3.50 a day. We have about 210 students that participate every single day between the four elementary buildings, and of course, the majority is at Ross and McIntyre, given the starting time difference. Wellness initiatives, just to talk a little bit about some of our successes this store, this school year, which, you know, we're happy to report. Some of the things that we've accomplished include a newly revised website, that includes many different community resources. It has minutes, agenda, agendas of our meetings, and again, a lot of different community resources on there. We do have a communication piece, if anybody would go on there, my contact information, how to get ahold of anybody, you know, if they have a wellness concern, there is that contact information on there. The snacks and celebrations, revised district policies and procedures, which I'll talk about in just a minute. We initiated a school meals survey, which the results are in front of you, and next week, we'll be celebrating Every Kid Healthy Week. Some of the activities will include Track and Field Day, which we're all familiar with, Fuel Up to Play 60 Sign-Up Challenge, Track Your Steps Challenge, Infused Water Stations, and Yogurt Carfays. So again, the revised, this is, you know, something that is an informational item in board docs this evening, so I'll just kind of go over this briefly. So revised parties and celebration guidelines. So birthday celebrations will include a variety of ways that teachers will share with families at the beginning of next school year. Most importantly, edible treats will no longer be permitted for student birthdays. Seasonal classroom parties may include food with very specific nutritional criteria that is outlined there. And, most importantly, in summary, the revisions were truly made to create a safer and more inclusive environment for all students. Okay, so the school meal survey, again, I won't get super in-depth with it, but you have the results in front of you. We had nearly, almost 800 respondents, a combination of parents and students. The purpose of the survey really was just to gain feedback and suggestions from the community at large to, you know, improve our program. So, some of the, the most common comment was that they would like to see water for free with a meal. That was probably the most common thing, and I can tell you that, that is strictly a USDA regulation, that water can never be substituted for milk, because milk supplies essential nutrients. So, that's something we can't do, but it was probably the most common request. One of the things is better marketing of what is included in the meal. We know that the meal is a wonderful bargain if they take everything that is included, and it is a very well-balanced meal, but we can definitely do a better job of marketing it, so we will be working on that. Local partnerships with farms, some new menu items, so that was a big thing. We got a lot of requests for various different food items, which we are currently investigating. And then, of course, time, and that's always concerned, breakfast, lunch, every school. So we know in the elementary schools, hopefully that will change, and we're gonna take a look at that as well. Okay, and just some things that we're gonna continue to work on in the next school year, equipment upgrades, some significant equipment upgrades in our various kitchens, continued emphasis on improved quality of our food items, student focus groups, which we have now, menu revision, and again, taking a look at things like the snack packs, which we have gotten comments on. And we will be looking at that for next year. More nutritional content, including allergen information on the website, and continuing with our sustainability initiatives, including a foam tray alternative for next year, which I am currently working on. Paper straws are gonna be in district-wide next year, we committed to that. And we're working with the Environmental Club to create some YouTube videos and things that we can use to push out to our student community. And that's pretty much it. Thank you to our awesome team, and these ladies are a very hard-working group of people, and they go above and beyond every single day to share a kind smile with every kid, and hopefully make their school day experience a little more positive. So, they are great, and I thank them. So, any questions?
The board, I'll open up questions, board members. Ellie?
First, I just wanted to say thank you for researching the paper straws. I'm personally really excited about that. I would also be really excited if we could find a, you know, a cost-effective alternative to the foam trays. I know we've discussed, you know, reducing waste and educating the kids about not taking more utensils, and working with the Environmental Club, and I think that's fantastic. I would love to see the comments that were, I know, it looks like there were 429 comments, so maybe you could email them to us, just so we could take a look at those, because those were excluded.
Yeah, I, if, the file was already 16 pages long, and there was like 400 and some, so I had a, when I went to export it, it actually said the file was too large, though. It would've ended up being, but I can try to email it over just, just the comment section.
Thanks. I have some feelings and thoughts about the snack pack too, but I know Mrs. Kuzera does, so.
Yeah, first, I wanted, I also wanted to thank you for, for coming tonight. I know that there was some scheduling issues, and I really appreciate you being able to come tonight. So, I know that we rolled, or you rolled out the new snack pack to the high school, and that is, I believe, carrots and tortilla chips, and I'm not exactly sure what's in it, but it was some different hummus. Yeah, it looked really good, and it was something that I think my daughter would really like to eat, and I was wondering if, you know, like, what the plan was as far as getting that to the elementary school level.
Okay, so, we're definitely going to be eliminating the existing snack pack next year. What we are gonna do with the snack pack, the kids love the yogurt, they love the string cheese, so, again, we have to, we have a lot of things to consider. We probably will likely-
Lindsay, I'm sorry, thank you.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I'm sorry. So, we'll likely change the name on it, and we have introduced and sampled hummus at different age groups, and they seem to like it. The response we get from a lot of the high school kids with the hummus snack pack is, oh, it's just not enough food.
Sure.
So, if we, I, we're definitely gonna have the hummus, we committed to purchasing it next year, so whether, is it a part of a meal, is it a part of the legume requirement that they can just, you know, get it, and it's a veggie, and they can dip their carrots in it, but it'll be there, we're working out what the alternatives will be.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just concerned that the snack pack at the elementary school in its current format really shouldn't be a meal offering, because it's, it's basically, I mean, I, it's, it's not, I, I mean, you mentioned milk, you know, being a USDA requirement, and I, it is, I know milk is part of the snack pack, but I look at the contents of the snack pack, and I just don't understand how that meets any requirement for lunch, you know, in any capacity.
So it does, it does meet, the meal, the yogurt and the cheese are the meat requirement, and then there's two breads, and so that's the bread, and, you know, so there's specific patterns for the lunch.
So I have some pictures of some of the snack packs that were taken, and I would like to share it with the board, because I, I'm not sure that, you know, everybody really knows exactly what's in that. I'm gonna pass these down. There's two options here, if, you know, you want to take a peek at them. They have cocoa puffs is on one of them as the grain requirement. I don't really understand, do you want to, if anybody wants to look at those? I don't really understand how that, you know, sort of meets any sort of health requirement. And, one of these is a chocolate muffin as the grain requirement. I mean, that's, that just seems to me like something that we don't want to give our children as lunch.
Okay. So first and foremost, it most definitely meets USDA requirements as a whole grain. We just underwent an audit, and-
Sure.
It does meet, so you, I mean, we are absolutely in compliance with the USDA.
Okay, I mean, and I don't mean to question whether or not we're in compliance, it's just like, I feel like we could do better than this, these offerings.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing, yeah. And, and Pat and Dave and I have talked about this, and we are already-
Okay.
-investigating, you know, definitely planning to change that next year.
Yeah, I mean, and I, I say this because, you know, I, my daughter took, ate the snack pack for the better part of her entire first grade year, and I didn't know what she was eating, because, you know, by the time she got home, she forgot what it was, and so, you know, I, by the time I realized this is what she was having for lunch, and told her, you know, "Don't get the snack pack anymore, I don't understand how you're not starving" like two hours later. I mean, she already ate it for a year, and I, I feel like, you know, having this kind of thing available at the school, and, you know, parents, you know, I feel like I'm reasonably involved, but I'm not, you know, like, it's not the kind of thing that an average parent may be aware that their kids are eating. So that's why I wanted to bring these pictures, to show people here, that that's what was, you know, on offer there, and also, I just, you know, I'm glad that we're taking steps, and I, to the extent that we can, you know, be sure that we take those steps to kind of, you know, eliminate these, you know, cocoa puffs for lunch, I mean, that's something, you know, maybe my mother-in-law will give my kids for lunch, but I don't want the school to give those to my, you know, my kid for lunch.
I don't disagree. I mean, I just wanted you to know, we are definitely, it's not like it's not compliant, but-
Yeah, no, okay. Well, I look forward to seeing what the options are next year then. So, thanks very much, and again, thanks for coming and putting all this information together.
Mr. Rennett would like the big cookie. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Kathy, go ahead. I would like to remind everybody, the good eating practices start at home. We support them, but they start at home, not in school.
Any other comments? Mr. Nudi? Mr. Nudi?
Lindsay, I have to applaud you on increasing participation in cafeteria. Is, are these numbers primarily at the high school?
Those are district-wide numbers.
District-wide.
So those are, right.
Drawing on my experience in the Army, when you have increased participation in your mess hall, you're doing something right. So evidently, you are doing something right.
Thank you. And so that's, that's obviously what we use too-
So we're bringing SK rations back.
It can.
Good enough for me.
Hey, you're a K ration guy, I was C ration guy.
Mr. Rennett, do you have a comment?
I just want to know if we ever did a survey before? Is this the first one we ever did? You obviously were not-
I'm not aware of one, so.
I'm just curious, because I don't know if Mr. Food ever did one?
Yes, I do know that George did.
George did?
Surveys every now and then.
I'd just be curious to see, compare the results. I think you're gonna probably have the same complaints or similar complaints. Parents have changed, but I don't think the world has, or vice versa. I can't remember which one, but, I, I would think the results are probably pretty similar.
Except Mr. Zappas was able to feed a whole lot more towards what the kids wanted, because the regulations were so-
That's true.
So less stringent.
So maybe they'd be more favorable then, than our, even though I don't think I remember that back.
They had the big cookie.
Bring back the big cookie, I'm all about that.
We had, we had some comments for that on ours, like, bring the big cookie back, several of those.
My vote.
See about adding falafel to the list for you there, Tim? Yeah, I know you love it.
He doesn't even remember what you're talking about, does he?
Any, any other comments? Lindsay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, next up, we have Mr. Dave Charles, it sounds like a singer. Mr. Charles is going to do the technology update.
Yes. It's, it's been a while, and a lot of great things have been happening, and I'm gonna touch on a few of them. We're always busy, so, here we go.
I hope you don't have any technology issues with your presentation.
Oh, no, I'm good. Yeah, I'm skillfully prepared, so. Again, I want to thank everybody for having me here, this is great, get to share some of the things that we've been improving on, and adding to, and growing, and helping our district achieve in the technology areas. I sit with a lot of folks across other districts, and I actually sit there with my chest out, quite proud of the things that we've accomplished compared to some of our peers. This is as brief as I can make it, so I'll try not to create a death-by-PowerPoint situation. But in overview, I will go over the technology footprint and asset management system that I've employed, Project Connect, digital safety overview, the new phone system, our Power School update, and strategic purchasing plan. So, technology footprint and asset management- So, technology footprint and asset management, one of the first things I did when I took post here was I formalized our inventory system. And we inventory twice a year. Once at the beginning of the school year when we deploy gear to students and teachers and everyone, and at the end of the school year to make sure we're getting it all back. We have had a very significant decrease in gear going missing and breakage, so that's good. I employed a barcoding system, so that the first year I was here, every asset tag in the history of the district, the little barcode was white. So, the first year, we did red, then the next year, we did blue, and then the next year, we did green, so we know what year this gear was purchased at. That's gonna come into discussion at the end in another topic. But that helps us decide when things are, how old they really are and when they were purchased. Efficient deployment, we're working very closely on making sure our footprint is succinct. We don't have superfluous gear everywhere that's not being used. We've greatly reduced older, damaged, unused, misappropriated, shared gear that we pay to support and we pay to manage and we pay to keep online. So, that is, that's a strong initiative. And as the iPad initiative, the Project Connect initiative grows, we have less need for so many carts and so many labs, but we still continue to run those. In detail, we have two labs per elementary, one in a library and there's a designated PC lab. There's four in this building and they're all iMac. This doesn't include tech ed. And then five in high school, the business labs and the library. STEM STEAM and engineering labs, there's five in the high school, that's our tech ed group. Graphics and photography and cinema are also included in that. And two here in the middle school, which is our product design and our graphics group. Project Connect is kind of an overall umbrella that includes our iPad initiative, our one-to-one initiative for kids. We're migrating our curriculum to a more digital-based curriculum. Currently, there's over 300 applications in the district that we're using, which spans from K to 12, all being utilized in many different ways. And we have an open policy that if teachers can actively go out and find new applications and find new tools and then they're presented through a rubric that we can vote on and accept them. Price is an issue with those. We're also creating district-generated content, where we have teachers and even students creating educational tools and media that we can use as curriculum and educational tools. This helps with us with a paperless effort. We have a very large spend on paper and toner and the more we move towards a digital premise, the lower that number goes. Currently in the district right now, there's over 3,000 iPads, with 766 of those just in sixth through 10 one-to-one initiative alone. Every teacher in the district has their own iPad, so they can utilize them like I am and they can move around the room and they can present with them, they can find new tools, they can get their email on and they can get online with them, just like the students. That number, 3,000 plus, does include some of the remainder of the carts we have, because not every grade has iPads one-to-one, so we still have to share devices. Fifth and 11th grade are gonna be added next year. Those will be purchased over the summer and deployed. And then 11th grade as the 10th grade moves up. And 12th grade to be added in 2020 and 21. So, digital safety, some of the things that we employ and we're constantly expanding in this area, is the first thing that we, we focus on is no generic logins. And what that means is, there's no machine that everybody can just, here's the password to that machine. Everybody who works in this district or is a student in this district or has been authorized an account, in order to use any of our gear, they must use their individual login. That makes sure that we can track everything by whoever's name that is. So, any malicious or any damaging or any suspicious logins, we know who did it. Or we know who got their password given to somebody else. That also helps us, we've employed a password change strategy, so that we are forcing all users, students included, to change our passwords at various times of the year. No exceptions. So, we have to make sure that we don't have people that have the same password for 12, 14 years, which we've, which we've had. So, Spam Titan is our virus scan, that's our email virus scan. All of our email goes to this cloud-based service and this service has very robust tools that spot and help decipher spam, phishing, and malicious attachment detection. Our antivirus at the end user is, on a PC base, is Microsoft Endpoint and on Mac, it's Fortinet Client Security. We, just in the last few months, have deployed Fortinet's man-in-the-middle encrypted search inspection. It sounds complicated, but what it really is, is if you go to Google and you type in "search for North Hills School District," Google encrypts it. It's a security feature that they have so that they can protect their users. Well, that's not exactly something that we're proud of or even try to support when we have kids that are searching for things that they probably shouldn't be. So, what this does is this tool, no matter if it's encrypted or not, it goes in and it can spot suspicious content, such as derogatory terms, dangerous terms, you know, pipe bomb or things like that. And it can generate reports and send us, hey, Dave just searched for something he probably shouldn't have, that goes to the principal and the principal can decide what action to take. We've had triggers where, for instance, Dick Cheney, that comes up a lot and kid's doing a report. So, they get the, you get the point. It allows district to custom filter. We can make what we want these filters to do. There's a li, a set list, a standard of, I guess, de facto criteria that it hits on, but we can also add things that we want to search on. And it generates those reports and triggers defined, undefined keywords and topics. Our Fortinet web filter is an internal web filter that in the district, if you're on our wireless or on our network, it filters web traffic, such as websites, places where they shouldn't be, advertising content that pops through. It, it also generates reports and alerts. And finally, JAMF, or Casper, as it was previously called, is the management tool that we use to manage all of our iPads. So, our iPads, there's a list of criteria that, how it pushes applications, how it moves applications from grade to grade, updates, system updates, all of that. Inventory and tracking, every year, we see what we start with and we see what we end with, we pull that inventory report right from JAMF. We get a list of devices that are no longer online. Well, where are they? Okay, they're over here, broken, damaged, checked, lost, we know where they are. So, that's very helpful in the inventory. And lost and, and, lost and stolen management. This year, we upgraded our phone system. We replaced our Avaya system with a Fortinet voice-over IP system that can use both traditional PRI, which is their standard phone links to, and SIP trunks, which is basically internet-based phone traffic. We are now finally one point of central administration, so there's one place that we can configure and manage all phone-based activity in the entire district. Some of the features that we moved to, 911 notification to all administrators and staff. Anytime someone dials 911 in the district, there is an email list that everybody gets that email, including the administration, myself, principals, so we know if there's something going on, everyone's alerted that someone had to call 911. Caller ID, emergency services, to the room. Everywhere you see a phone, only for 911 services. When, like, when you see someone calling you on your phone, the caller ID for 911 services only, we have, they know exactly what room that 911 call came from. It's a nice feature. And again, a single phone directory, single location for everything. Web-based, you can retrieve and get emails based on your missed calls, voicemail, whatever you want. You can go into your own portal and configure whatever you wanna see go to your voicemail and we can configure it so that your voicemail goes to your email, so you can listen to it on your phone or on your computer at home. Virtual phone software, we haven't deployed this yet, but if for any reason we have someone who is working remotely or someone at a conference, there's an app you can use for almost any phone, Apple or Droid-based, that it emulates your internal district phone. Most people don't want that, 'cause they have the email response, so they, they know when people are calling them. Advanced, very advanced reporting on inbound and outbound calls, detailed user reporting, we can count internal, external, length, duration, all kinds of nice features with that, so. Next, we, we tackled upgrading our SIS system from Prosoft to Power School. This was a massive project that was handled expertly by none other than Don Clark. I cannot congratulate him enough on that. We, I talked to school districts that are still migrating from two years ago. Don completed this in five months. That's every piece of data on our kids' scheduling, everything you could think of that has to do with moving kids and grades and all of that through classes, Don did it in five months. So, the reason we moved is because, some of the reasons we moved is electronic grade books and SIS are integrated in Power School, where Prosoft was manual and labor-intensive. Prosoft had poor data collection tools, so anytime someone said, hey, the state needs this, we had to go into this FoxPro database and pull out as much data as we could. It was labor-intensive and very difficult. Again, antiquated data housing and poor technical support, that was a big one, because when we had problems, we couldn't get support. We converted the data, which means how Prosoft sees all of this information and how Power School needs to see this information in three weeks. That, Don dedicated his life to that and he did an excellent job. And we got all the way to and through the migration, up till we started generating our own custom reports for what we wanna see and how we wanna see it and how we wanna customize our report cards and all of that. Don did all of that in five months. It was a massive project. Power School is web-based and hosted off-site. There's a parent portal, there's advanced reporting, multi-layer customer support for us on the inside, on the nerd side. Largest-accepted SIS platform in the country. It's highly customizable, it still keeps the ma, the basic data in the basic form of how schools are run, but we can manipulate that data to export how and what we, we wanna see it. Advanced state reporting support staff. They recognize that every state has different reporting needs. Well, there's a group that's dedicated to how Pennsylvania reports on their school districts and we have a direct link to them. Handles third-party plug-in tools easily. So, that's just some of the features. It's a very big application and we could talk for days on it, but it, it was a very, a very nice step forward for us. Migration from Prosoft student, the data migration and configuration completed in six months, including some of the report cards that was planned for a year. And then primary reporting was another six months where we got our report cards up and we got all of our, how we, we view our grades and how we do our scheduling and all of that. And then, we're always continually refining new reports. It's a very versatile app and I, I have to commend one of my team members to, for doing such a great job with that. So, we're moving forward. Dr. Manarino and I are tackling a strategic purchasing plan. When I got here, after I did my first inventory, we had gear that was as old as 13, 14 years old. So, we're trying now to get into a regular refresh strategy based on the inventory and that includes any gear that's in our operations technology, which is listed above or below, copiers and printers, infrastructure, campus security. We wanna make sure that we don't have antiquated gear and everything works, especially for our students on the end-user side. So, we're working to implement a strategy that we don't end up with broken gear in our kids' hands or stuff that shouldn't be limping along, so to speak. So, any questions? I'm sure there are some.
I have, oh, you guys get first. Oh, so, you spoke a lot about the, like, safe browsing within our school networks and my question was, I know that some other school districts, like, I believe North Allegheny, when a student takes like an iPad home, it's still on the school's network?
Yes.
Is that something that we've looked at or considered in this district?
We most certainly have. That's called proxying. So, what that does is that forces any, and we can do that with the tools we have. JAMF can do that for us. The issue that we run into and we, we address this every year in budget and we, we look at it as a team and we always welcome input on it, is that massively increases our bandwidth. So, and we pay for our bandwidth through the AIU and we pay about $3,500 bucks a quarter, something like that. It would significantly, and you can't just buy a little bit, the smallest portion we could buy would literally double our bandwidth. So, it's a cost thing. We do have parents and even users ourselves, we all have to sign the acceptable use policy.
Yes, yes.
So, but it is always a consideration. I'm wrestling with those guys to get that number, that cost down as much as I can. I would love to do that, it's just not economically feasible right now.
And, and I'm not sure, I'm sorry, if this is a question for you or maybe Dr. Taylor, but with the iPads being put in the hands of fifth graders next year, I know this year we removed YouTube from the iPads for sixth grade, are there any other apps which maybe wouldn't be appropriate for fifth grade that we need to look at and consider, like, just for, for safety purposes?
That for us come, I mean, for, we take the directive and I don't know if there's anything off the top of your head that you could think of?
I can't think of anything besides YouTube.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, a couple of questions. First of all, when you're talking about the, the five-year refresh, are, are you looking at, are we looking at placing X amount of money over a period of time into either capital improvement, if that would be appropriate, or like technology improvement, so that we don't get, we wait five years and all of a sudden need to come up with several million dollars?
Yes. The, the primary function of the refresh strategy is two, functions are twofold. Dr. Manarino and I discussed, the first thing is, we begin to predict how much money we need for technology. So, we don't have this, well, this year, we didn't spend that much, oh, but next year, we gotta refresh all this stuff. So, we're trying to even that out. You know what I mean?
Every year for, say, five years?
Yeah. It, it's never perfect, but we, we definitely wanna get it, we wanna start it trending. We don't like the erratic nature of these purchase plans. iPads and things like that, they have a limited life cycle, just as every PC, cameras, all of this stuff, it only lasts for so long. So, that's primary function number one. Primary function number two is that we keep working technology that's necessary. No extra bells and whistles. We want features, we want things that are gonna be helpful and useful for the kids to use, but we're not gonna buy a Cadillac when we need a Volkswagen. So, making sure the technology works, it's efficient, everything is as we need and it's, it's helps educates, educate kids, that's the goals.
And Tom, that's spelled out in the, in the tech audit, but the other part about that, that we kinda missed a little bit too, is that as we're purchasing technology that allows us to do different things, then what technology items do we have that when they come up for refresh, don't need to be repurchased? And that's also a part of that. So, as you decommission items, as we go through, you know, a technology expansion, that is, is all in that thought process, so that we could keep a relatively even number annually.
Yeah, that's fine. Another question was, you, you talked about-
Tom, you might wanna speak into your microphone.
I'm sorry. You talked about, if you are using a North Hills device on campus, then you have the ability to provide certain kind of search security, so I'm, I assume there's an algorithm that's used that-
Correct.
Okay. What about when you're using that same device off-campus?
Off-campus, it's a responsibility, as it's signed in the end-user agreement, the acceptable use policy, at this time, it's the responsibility of the parent.
Okay. Can, do we, do we somehow, are we somehow able to track? Okay.
The only thing that we can do and-
Cookies?
It depends on how, yeah, it depends on how crafty the kid is, is we could confiscate the device or we can attach to it remotely through JAMF and check web history, if, from, from home use.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah. And, and the last question is, are, have we ever discussed the use of things like FaceTime to eliminate the need for all the meetings that we have and we could just do it?
Uh, not formally. I know Dr. Manarino and I do it often, if he's traveling or I'm traveling- If he's traveling or I'm traveling, and there's points we have to discuss. I guess that, right now, it's an individual, individual preference, but there's no formal...
Should we be looking at that?
It's twenty-year-old technology. I mean, and it's on every device, I don't know. However you choose to, to use it, I mean, you'd have to get consensus on whoever you want to use it with, but...
Do we have any sort of conferencing account?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have, we have audio conferencing with our Fortinet system. Video conferencing, you can do that through Skype. We don't own anything as far as an account that we pay for. If that's something you guys would like, we could certainly set it up for you.
Yeah, I would suggest that we take a look at that, because you have travel time for people to go to meetings and things like that. You know, if they're, if they're principals, they're away from their building, or even teachers, so it might be advantageous for us to, rather than get everybody to come down to the administrative office to just, you know, do a Skype or something of that nature.
The technology is available, that's for sure. Anything else?
I'm aware of that, I just don't see any action or any movement in that direction. So I'll just throw it open for some consideration. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I was hoping you could talk a little bit more about the, you know, at our, at my work, it's obviously a little different situation because it's an international law firm, but we had a big presentation about data security and phishing attempts and that sort of thing. And I was just, you know, wondering if you could speak a little bit more specifically to the kinds of things you do to educate about, you know, phishing attempts and avoid, you know, someone to come in to our system from the outside and like, steal the data, and especially, I mean, you know, it's, it would be data theft of, of students, obviously. So it's, you know, it's not like stealing millions of dollars.
Right. Well, I can tell you that, that is something that we take extremely seriously. And Phil Brophy, who is my senior network engineer, and I have been working probably for the last three years on creating additional layers to get through. We just, we just purchased and refreshed our VPN technology, which is if anyone needs to remote into the district or anything, and access to that is extremely limited. You need multi-layers of approvals, all of that. We get daily reports on anyone and everyone that's logged into our district every day. We see that, you know, what accounts have come through. I'm working on putting together a penetr, a third-party penetration test to see how easy it is to get to our stuff. We have off-site backup, so that if anything was to happen to our data or it was destroyed or lost, we have off-site backup. We have been migrating, we're in an attempt right now to begin migrating most of our data out of, like, our student data, you know, their reports and their homework, to their Gmail accounts, to their Google Drive and things like that, so that it's not housed here. The critical data is our finance data and our student data. Our student data is housed by PowerSchool. So that, all of their contact information, all of, the information regarding our students is all hosted in the responsibility of our SIS vendor. So, any penetration tests, a security test that they may have performed is probably online somewhere. Does that help, that answer your question?
Yeah, that helps a little bit. And sort of on the, on the flip side, I think many of us on the board certainly have had the experience where we've, you know, our emails that we may have sent are go-to spam, and I, I've had emails that I've sent to my kid's teacher go to spam. I know you said it was very, like, thorough, but I'm concerned it might be a little too thorough, and I'm wondering, like, if, if, if it's possible to, you know, like, when I, when I have an email that goes to spam at my work, I get an email that's, I mean, it's a little bit of overkill. It's like, this email is, we think it's spam, and I'm like, well, now I have to look at this email. But, you know, if, if it's a teacher, you know, an email from a student, it's parent, you know, like a parent or something, it might be, you know...
Every user in the district, and we discussed this when we rolled this new tool out, every user in the district has a login to the spam filter to their own personal portal.
Yeah.
So they can set up their spam reporting any way they want, including that. I have mine that every morning at six o'clock, I get a report. So, first thing I do when I sit down, say hello to my team, and I look at my spam report. If I think I missed something, there's a little button at the bottom that says, run another one right now. So, in every spam, I, I don't know if you get that through the district, but there are, there's a ton of ways that you can configure that however you want.
We should, but we don't.
Yeah. I can certainly...
Well, no, I just...
Yeah. So, what's that? Yeah. So, there's, there's a ton of tools and a ton of methods I could help you configure that.
I mean, it's, I'm not speaking for me personally, I mean, the, the staff, and, you know, I would, they, I assume they have some sort of training or, you know, maybe there's communication to that.
We, uh, I'm glad you mentioned that. We have taken many steps to continue to educate technically the staff and students. There's tons of emails that the team sends out, hey, this is coming up soon, and as we get closer, don't forget, this is coming up soon. Here's how to clean your inbox, here's how to check your spam. We do a lot of that kind of forward push on technology education, who uses it, you know. A lot of times they say, oh, IT department, delete, you know.
Do you get people reporting phishing emails at all?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. We have, and we have a policy and a security policy around that. We analyze it as soon as we get, we're made aware of it. Something that does get through the spam filter or does get through our firewall, we, we have a policy and a process around all. It's our P1 policy that I've implemented, meaning, okay, all IT hands on deck. Who's needed, who isn't? Let's go. So, and then we can go into individual email boxes and delete those, and, you know.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Suggest, you know, from that.
Sure.
I, I, first of all, I think you and your group are doing a good job compared to what was happening years ago.
Thank you.
It's a vast improvement. I would like to suggest, though, that you think about some training for board members. There are things that we should be able to do that we don't even know the question to ask. So, you know, this spam filter is a good example.
Absolutely. Our, our team, our building techs and our team, we would love to...
Maybe we could do a survey of the board, saying what kind of things are you interested in, or what kind of problems are you having, and we can put together a little training session.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charles.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Hey, let's move on to education. Ally?
Thank you. There's several items under education tonight, and I'll be making a motion to add these to the legislative agenda, so they're not actually being approved tonight, just for clarification. The first three are updates to the faculty handbooks. The first is the North Hills High School Faculty Handbook. Some staff names have been updated in here, the table of contents. The main change in this faculty handbook is that going forward, starting next year, the assistant principals currently are organized in such that they're, there's a nine-ten and then eleven-twelve grade level assistant principal. And going forward next year, that's going to be changed to alphabetical, so we'll have an A to L and an M to Z house office. Dr. Manarino, I don't know if you have any other comments on that, I know you...
No, we're going back to the house office, which is what it was whenever I was assistant principal, it's been that long ago. But it allows our principals to establish relationships with students that go over a four-year period rather than a two-year period. It's also aligned with the way our guidance councils are aligned by alphabet. So that's why we chose to go back to something that we had had in the past and it worked. We moved to grade levels, thinking, you know, that the needs of students in different grades have different needs, and, but what we lost was that relationship-building opportunity. So now that we have the opportunity to reset at the administration, at the high school, we're going to go back to the house office system that we had before.
Thank you. The next is the middle school faculty handbook. There actually were not any changes that were attached to board docs, so I'm not, I'm not clear on whether there were changes to the faculty handbook there. The K to six faculty handbook had some minor revisions, which are detailed in board docs. Nothing extremely significant there. The K to six program of studies is next, and all of the changes in that are minor editing corrections, some updates to dates, and update to the technology section to include iPads for the fifth graders next year, and some minor updates to the science and morning care section. Next is a request for the board to approve the annual concurrent enrollment agreements with LaRoche University, Seton Hall University, Point Park University, Carlo University, and the University of Pittsburgh, per the attached. These agreements will be from August 1st, 2019, to June 30th, 2019, and are relative to students who meet all qualifications to participate in the program. Students must be high school juniors or seniors making satisfactory progress towards fulfilling applicable secondary school graduation requirements for that. And progress will be based on credits earned and completion of district established prerequisites. Next is the Adelfoy, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, Education Services Agreement, and a request that the board approve the 2019 to 2020 agreement, per the attached. Adelfoy Education Services provides alternative education services for disruptive youth, operates an approved private academy school program, a special education program for students, and a partial hospitalization program. And then the, the tuition schedule is attached for everybody's reference there. The last item, just lost my place. So, the last item is an informational item, which is the wellness policy, which we have been discussing. And this would actually be part of the elementary handbook when we review that and approve that, and we're taking a little more time to go over those this year. So, we did want to put this out there for parent review and feedback as soon as possible, because I know that, I've been on all sides of this situation. I've been a PTO president, I've been a party volunteer, I'm on the school board now, I'm on the wellness committee. So, I've heard a lot about snacks in the schools over the years, and I know that they can be a little bit of a hot topic. So, we wanted to put this out there in advance of next year, so that people have time to get used to the new procedures and guidelines, and we have time to publicize the new procedures and guidelines. I also did, once the agenda became published, I went ahead and I reached out to the current PTO leadership at the four elementary schools, just to let them know that this was coming down the pipeline. And I received feedback from three of the four schools. So, just really quickly, I'll go over the policy, and then I'll just mention a couple of things that I heard. But, the policy creates guidelines for daily classroom snacks in certain grade levels. Teachers are, allow their class to bring in snacks at a scheduled daily time. It lists guidelines for student birthday celebrations, which basically, we will not, parents will not be allowed to send in any kind of food or non-food treat item. Beginning next year, teachers will be in charge of the birthday celebrations in the classroom. And this was really just to make it more equitable for the students, so that no student felt left out, because they're, they maybe had a financial burden, or maybe, like in my case, the parent just forgot to send in a birthday treat on any given year. So, any food treats or non-food treats that are brought in will be, not be distributed and will be returned home with the child. The next section details some changes to the seasonal classroom parties. I'm really pleased that we're creating a broad guideline that's coming down from the district on this, so there can be some uniformity throughout the elementary schools on how this is handled. I think it's really clearly written out and very simple. You can see it on the PowerPoint up there. But, for those watching along at home, the guidelines allow one healthy snack, that is a fruit or a vegetable, a special treat snack, which must be prepackaged with nutritional label provided, and less than 200 calories per serving. The reason for this is to take allergy concerns and food safety into consideration. And then a beverage is also allowed. Class rewards will no longer include food items, they'll do some special events. I, I also spoke to Amy Mathieu about this, who was, I should have mentioned earlier, very involved in crafting this policy with the principals from all four elementary schools, and, and she spoke to me about some of the great outdoor rewards that they do, like extra recess, or, you know, having time to play in the snow in the winter as opposed to using food as a treat. And so, the reasons for that are sort of to not undo any guidelines that families have set up at home for, you know, what they do or don't allow their kids to eat. And also, like, not tie food to an emotion as a reward. But lastly, this policy importantly does allow the consideration of special events. I know that some schools have Thanksgiving celebrations, I believe Westview does. I know that Ross usually has a Kona ice truck at Field Day. So those events will be allowed by the principals as, and at their discretion. So, you know, the main feedback that I received, and I'll try to be brief on this, I know we've talked about this a lot, but I think it's important. The main feedback I've received from the PTOs is just that we work really hard to communicate this clearly to the parents, and maybe create some sort of, you know, flyer on peach jar and publicize this in advance, so that the burden is not on the teachers to constantly be sending home birthday treats or, or food items that kids have sent in, and, and to make sure that this is as easy on the teachers as possible. So, with all that being said, I move that items one through seven be added to the legislative meeting agenda for approval.
Second.
Thank you. We can now move on to...
You didn't discuss it.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're voting right this time, I'm sorry, yep. Any discussion?
I had a question.
Yes.
Okay, and this is probably, I think, for Mr. Taylor, but the high school faculty handbook, there's a number of policies in there. And we've been going through and working separately through the policy committee to get a lot of policies in line with PSBA. But in the information that you, that's provided, I didn't see any relationship to, to that. Have those policies that are in the faculty handbook been checked to make sure that they match the new ones? Were there, was anything changed?
Dr. Williams does go through all the policies, and she actually has a team of teachers that goes with it, with her, and goes through that. It's reviewed several times by a group of people at the high school, and they do check.
So we have, we have made sure that we've caught up to what we've done as a board with the new...
I can't prob, I can't say that, but Dr. Williams...
Before we vote, can we just, can we just check?
We're just adding this to the agenda.
Right, I know, and I, I have no problem adding it to the agenda, but it's just something that, you know, I don't see the information here. So before I vote on it, you know, and that's not meant to say, you know, that anyone is, is not doing policies, but in all organizations, sometimes things move faster in one area than they do in another. So I just want to make sure that before we vote to prove this, that we've got everything lined up and synchronized, because, especially at this time of the year. So, that was kind of my specific question. And just in general, it looks like there are still a few more corrections and some proof marks and things like that in there. So I'm assuming that that's going to be corrected before next week as well, so that we're voting on a clean document?
I believe Dr. Williams' memo stated that she was going to have ongoing drafts.
Okay.
In the memo attached to the agenda item. I know she was going to work on it actually going into June.
It doesn't say that.
Well, then, if they're ongoing drafts, then why are we voting on a draft that isn't the final draft?
It doesn't say that.
I mean, I'm, I'm a little confused here. What is it that we're being asked to vote on, then, if they're not completed?
The drafts are going to be the minor edits at the end.
Okay.
Things like names that we know are incorrect.
Okay.
You know, phone numbers, like, those types of things that we're going to change as people rotate through. You're voting on the meat of the document, of which most of this is not changed, should not be changed. Many of the things that are in here have been negotiated in the teacher's contract. These are the general rules established between the district and the teaching staff, as far as what time to report, network use, like, that type of thing. This is not the place that our policies are referenced. This is, this document is for the adults. They know where the policies are. You know what I mean? Like, they're on board docs, they're responsible for them when we pass them.
But there are policies in the document.
Right, but that's, yes. But this is the document that explains how the teacher's contract is enforced with the rules of, of the building.
I think what I'm just really asking for is a little more clarity.
So as far as a draft, it's a draft only because there are going to be minor edits, but there's not going to be major edits. There's not going to be things that are, you know, going to be too, you know, any of the policies, obviously, if there are policy changes. But when you go back through here, about homeroom duty guidelines, like, these things are not going to change.
That's, and that's fine, I just want a little more clarity, because I just felt like we, it wasn't as clear to me reading this and not being, you know, part of the education committee, just, it just wasn't clear to me exactly what, you know, where all this was. So I guess I'm just asking for a little more clarity before next week.
I can't hear you in that.
And that, you guys speak into the... And that, you guys speaking to the...
Oh, I was, sorry Kathy, I was just asking for a little bit more clarity before we vote on those, so I think Dr. Manarino addressed the question.
Yeah, but I have a concern, we're still voting for something that's in draft form.
I don't see where it says that it's in draft form.
I mean, can we do this in June, when it's going to be...
We're pushing it to do it in June. The edits are minor, there's nothing that's changing in these documents.
If you either want, apparently Jeff, correct me, this is Dr. Williams', this is hers, right, so to speak, so if you have some questions, maybe just give her a call. That's probably, I mean, to get it straight from her if there's anything...
Yeah, if we just get some questions, some clarity before next week, that's...
Sure, yeah, get yourself a comfort level.
Yeah.
Okay.
We just need more, I just personally need some more information.
Okay. Anything else?
I had a quick comment, a couple of quick comments about the wellness policy, or the guidelines, I'm sorry. My daughter was in a room with kids, several kids with severe allergies one year, and her teacher made the decision to, their, their parties had no snacks at all. And I think based on the kids that were in that, that was a great decision. And I, I think it might be nice to consider including something in the guidelines about that situation. I mean, I know the kids' allergies in that particular case were so severe that, like, it was just, they actually, I think they put them all together on purpose, and, you know, that's, that's kind of why they did it that way. And I would just, you know, like, it's at the discretion of the teacher, based on the makeup of the class, if they want to determine, if they want to say, you know, we're not going to have food at our, at our parties at all. And I just think it might be nice to include something in there to allow the teachers to have that to point to and say like, no, I don't want to allow food at the parties.
Mr. Nudi?
The purpose of this party is to take that discretion from the teacher. This is standard policy across the board throughout the district.
Okay.
There's no discretion on the part of the teacher at all.
Right, so I mean, in that, in that case, that means that they have to have food? Is that what you mean?
No, they don't have food.
They have food at the parties, at the seasonal classroom parties. Like, people can bring food in.
There's a party for Christmas.
It has to be prepackaged food.
Right.
Okay, so...
Yeah, but they decided that due to allergies, they didn't want to have any food. They didn't want to risk it.
So, what are you, what are you suggesting, Sandy?
I just mean it might be a good idea to say, like, you know, if in the discretion, if the teacher...
It says in here, any snack items that would not be safe for all students would not be approved.
So, that, in that case, that would be sufficient?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right.
I have one more question, I'm sorry, a comment on my own, I guess it's for maybe Dr. Manarino. I had a parent that also asked me a question about, I guess, some, some schools in some grades, the classes that have later lunches are allowed to bring in snacks, but not every classroom is allowed to bring in snacks in the same grade across the schools. Is that true? Do you, do you know? Is that a building principal decision? Okay.
Is that a teacher decision? The ones that aren't allowed? I guess I assume it is, right?
I think, I guess it is a teacher decision, yeah.
And we just talked about that, right? Giving, leaving it up to the discretion of...
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. We can now move on to athletics and activities.
I have one item that the board approved, the continued recognition for North Hills inline hockey for 2019-2020, and approved a district reimbursement for the 2018-19 school year in the amount of $1,247. For those of you that are playing along at home, we approved the ice hockey last week. I was actually a little confused, and I wondered why we were doing this again, but it is a different team. So, I move that item one under athletics and activities be added to the legislative meeting agenda for approval.
Second.
Thank you. We can now move on to Beatty, that would be Mr. Kelly or Mr. Nudi, whoever wants to state it. Mr. Nudi?
Okay, the...
Speak into the microphone, please.
2019, 2020 Beatty Career Center budget is up for approval by the board this evening. North Hills' participation in the district operating budget share is $951,149, which is up $12,707 from last year. And the bond debt allocation to North Hills is $203,115, and that's up $329 from the previous year.
Okay. I guess we need to make a motion to approve that.
Whenever it comes up.
Yeah, that's an act.
Well...
Tonight, we have to make a motion and approve it.
Okay.
There you go. Oh, here we are, here we are. Okay, I found it. Now I lost it. There I go, there we go.
The superintendent recommends and ISO moves the board approve A.W. Beatty Career Center item one.
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Kathy, do you vote yes?
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Reed. We can now move on to personnel, and that would be Mrs. Spade.
Personnel items are discussed at executive session, therefore the superintendent recommends an ISO move that the board approve personal items one through five.
Second.
Thank you. We have a memorandum here. Mrs. Reed, are you prepared to do community and intergovernmental relations?
Yes, I believe I am.
Okay.
Hopefully I am.
Just a moment Kathy, we're going to vote on person.
On an action, I'm sorry, for the personnel? I'm sorry, we have to vote to approve the personnel action item, I'm jumping ahead. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, just a moment Kathy.
I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome Heather Pellet. Heather is with us tonight, she is our, she has just been named the Director of Communications and Development. Heather joins the district having spent most of her career in the local television and news industry. Congratulations Heather, and welcome. Also with that motion and vote, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Jeff Taylor. Jeff is, will be hired as, is hired as the superintendent of the Norman School District. I think that's why he wore blue and gold tonight. But, we're really happy for Jeff, we're really proud of Jeff, as he's going to go off and be the leader of the Norman School District, which is, which is an incredible school district, and he has been an invaluable asset to this district for over 15 years. So, we wish him the best of luck. So, Jeff's resignation leaves a vacancy in the Assistant Superintendent position that was filled tonight by the Board of Action by Dr. Beth Williams. Dr. Williams is our current high school principal, she has been with the district since 2006. She was first hired as an assistant principal at the North Hills Middle School. She also served as the High Cliff Elementary School Principal, and she came back to the middle school where she was principal, and then she has served as our high school principal since 2015, so she will be joining us in central office as our new Assistant Superintendent. And we also approved the resignation of Shannon Crombie. Congratulations to Shannon, she was our assistant, one of our assistant high school principals, and Shannon is taking a job in the Ringgold School District to be the Director of Curriculum Assessment and Innovation. So, we've had some, we've had some moves here, and without Heather, it was really hard to tell our story. So, the story is not of Exodus, it's of people getting promotions and taking their leadership skills to a higher level, either inside of our district or outside of our district. So, this is actually a happy moment for all of us. I mean, we hate to be losing great leaders like Jeff Taylor, like Shannon Crombie, but they're going up, they're being promoted. And so, again, I said this when I began, I'm really proud of Jeff, I look forward to seeing his successes happen in the Norman School District, and that's kind of what's happening. Shannon's going off to be a successful central office administrator from an assistant principal chair. That's not a small jump, and that just says a lot about the administrators that we have on this team and where we've prepared them to go into the future. So, we are really excited about that, that's what those personnel actions were. So, you might have seen some of our postings out there, we are currently in hot pursuit for two assistant principals, a high school principal, and an elementary assistant principal, and our plan is to have all of those interviews completed, and we hire all of those positions at the May 30th Board Meeting. I booked all of our adminis, or all of our board members' calendars as solid as I could get them through the month of May, so that we could have our leadership team prepared on or before July 1st moving forward. So, it's actually exciting, not so much that it's May and we get to put all those pieces together, but there's great things happening to the administrators that we have, and there's great promise for us moving forward as a district. So, this is a happy moment for all of our administrators.
Dr. Manarino, just to let you know, there's a small article, or an article in the McKnight Journal about Jeff and his promotion, so I looked at it today before I came here. If you guys want to save your copies, he'll sign those.
Congratulations, that, Norman's a good school district, that's a great school district, and I just, and it's kind of a similar size to ours, is it not? Okay.
About a thousand more.
About a thousand more, so it's even bigger, great, that's wonderful. Everybody keeps plucking our talent. Okay, let's move on, can we move on now? Okay, thank you. Mrs. Reed, if you're still there, we're going to ask you to do the governmental relations, if you will.
Okay, I'm here. On the agenda this evening is, we need to, each school chief administrator needs to execute and update a biennial memorandum of understanding with each local police department that has jurisdiction over the school property. In this regard, we had, we have a memorandum of understanding with Ross Township Police and also with the Westview Police Department. The Office of Safe Schools requires the districts to meet this biennial requirement in the odd number of years. We will prepare and execute these MOUs in 2021 and every 21, and every two years thereafter. Are there any questions?
Doesn't appear to be any.
Huh?
Nope, no questions Kathy.
Oh, good. I would be able to answer them anyway. I think that item one be added to the legislative meeting agenda for approval.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. I just want to say, at least, I'm sorry. Yeah, he had a second, she made a motion, and he seconded, so now, do we need to prove it?
Is it a voting?
Do you have a motion on putting it on the agenda?
No, we just get a second. I'm getting confused.
You got me on it now.
Anyways, what I, what I... This is true. What I want to say, just a comment with respect to Ross Township and Westview Police, I'll say, speak for myself, but I know I'm speaking on behalf of the district. We have such a tremendous relationship with both police departments, and they're, they are just, really, all they do for us, what a tremendous resource. I know they provide a tremendous amount of assistance for our school police, and they're there whenever we need them, and I just want to, again, hats off to both, both Chief Lee and both, Chief Lee and Chief Fromulak from Westview and Ross Township, because boy, they have been a big help for us, and I just can't, I can't really say enough about, about our relationship with them. So, that being said, we can move on to the legislative, Mr. Nudi.
One item on the legislative agenda this evening, it's Resolution 2019-7, supporting Senate Bill 34 and House Bill 526 for school districts providing their own cyber charter. This in fact, this essentially will, if passed in both houses, alleviate about a million dollars a year, is that correct, Dr. Manarino? In funds that we are currently sending to the for-profit cyber charter schools. I think we're getting closer to some resolution of this issue after the, my trip to Harrisburg on Monday, I'm seeing both houses moving in the direction of correcting this problem on funding of cyber charter schools. Senator Brown has introduced a bill in the Senate to establish a school funding committee that will investigate the funding of cyber charter schools and brick and mortar cyber schools, or brick and mortar charter schools as separate entities, as opposed to lumping them under one umbrella for funding. I'd like to make a motion that item one under legislative be added to the May 9th meeting agenda.
I'll second it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Nudi. We don't have anything under policy this evening, Mr. Kelly, unless you have something you need to add?
No, there are no...
Thank you. We can now move on to finance, that would be Dr. Knowles.
Okay, thank you. We're going to start tonight with a presentation from Mr. David Hall, he's going to give us an update on the 2019 to 2020 general fund budget.
Is anybody speaking? I can't hear.
Dave Hall's getting his presentation ready Kathy. We're just getting his presentation up.
Okay.
Okay, in front of you this evening is, for approval, is the 2019-2020...
Dave, I'm sorry.
Not working, huh?
Now it is, thank you.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Anyhow, in front of you this evening is, for approval, is the 2019-2020 proposed final budget. In normal language, that would be called the preliminary budget, but under the state required language, we have to call it a proposed final budget. Come on.
Thank you.
It worked fine in practice. There we go. Okay, the budget as being proposed has revenues of $82,769,861, which includes a .4 mil real estate tax rate increase. That is approximately a 2.2% increase, which is slightly less than the Act I limit of We're also proposing to use $1,156,000 from the fund balance that we set aside to help cover Peters costs, which I'll go into more detail later, giving us total available resources of $83,926,000 and proposed expenditures of $83,926,000. So, the proposed final budget is a balanced budget. You can see the tax rate is currently 18.25 mils, we're proposing an increase of .4 mil, which would bring it to 18.65. And again, further in the presentation, we'll see what the impact of that is on, on the When you look at the Peters assigned fund balance usage, you can see that a few years back, we set aside $7.5 million of our fund balance to be used to help offset or mitigate the impact of the growth in the Peters costs. We've gone through four years of that, this 1920 will be the fifth year. After 1920, there'll be, looks like about $3 million, about $2 million left, and we'll use it for another four years, at which point we will fully absorb the Peters costs. On the real estate taxes, the approved tax rate is 18.25 mils, which for the average or median homeowner will cost $2,480. We're proposing a .4 mil tax increase, which again, for the median homeowner will be $54. So, the proposed 1920 tax rate would be 18.65 mils, or $2,534. Want to keep in mind that all those numbers are before the homestead exemption and before the 2% discount for paying by the end of August. After the exemption and the discount, the amount would be $2,310 under the current rate, the tax rate increase would be $51, and the total cost would be $2,361 for the The homestead exemption for 1920, the gaming funds that are being allocated to us is $1,431,555, which is about $800 less than last year. The number of certified homesteads is 11,423, which is 15 or 20 more than last year. So, the tax relief for each homeowner, which is the $1,431 divided by the 11,423, is $125 per homeowner. That equates to a homestead exemption or a reduction of your assessed value of $6,720 for every homeowner who has the homestead exemption. Looking into some detail then, we get to the revenues compared to 1819, the local revenues are going up from 59.5 to 61,800, a change of almost 2.3 million, or 3.84%. Keep in mind, that includes the $1,40,000 increase from the tax rate increase of .4. State is going from 19,874 to 21,37, or an increase of 263,000, or 1.3%. And the federal is going from $1,500,000... And the federal is going from $1,505,000 to 836,000, a decrease of 169,000 or almost 17%. That decrease is almost entirely due to a decrease in the subsidy for our Build America Bonds and that's because our costs are going down, our interest costs are going down on the Build America Bonds as we pay them off. Personnel costs, which make up the sizable majority of the budget, wages are going from a little over 36 million to almost 37 million, an increase of 820,000 or 2.27%. That includes both increases in individual wages as well as changes from staff increases. FICA costs, which, I swear I'm not doing anything to make a wiggle like that. FICA basically follows the wages. It's all, it's 7.65% of wages, so it's going up a similar percentage. Retirement is going up from 12 million to 12,600,000, an increase of almost $600,000 or 4.99%. About half of that is due to an increase in the rate for the retirement and the other half is due to the increase in the wages that the retirement applies to. Medical costs, being held very, very well once again by the Allegheny Intermediate Unit and their consortium, is going up by 28,000 or .41%. And other employee benefits is actually decreasing a little bit by 8,000 or 2.64%. And when we get to non-personnel costs, debt services going down slightly by 53,000. Tuition is one of the biggest increases, or is actually the biggest increase, at 473,000 or almost 12%. It's almost entirely due to increases in special needs programming, which is due to increases in special need students with severe needs. Transportation costs are going up by almost 86,000 or 2.9%, which is just a contractual rate increase. Utilities are dropping slightly by $67,600, about 5%. And other expenditures are going up by 317,000, almost 318,000, most of which is explained by an earlier presentation, which is costs of replacement and new technology equipment. In fact, all of it would be described by that because those costs are going up by about 400,000. Tendency is staying the same as it has been for a number of years, bringing the total to an increase of 756,000 or 3.28%. Questions?
Well, anybody have any questions?
I have a few comments I want to make from, just kind of follow up on a couple of things that Dave mentioned, but so we can do that or we can do questions first, whatever.
I'll just have, I just have a couple of comments and then you could go from there. Just to follow up with what Mr. Hall said, I, you read through these numbers and you look at, at costs and where they are and it just, it really gets a little mind boggling. I just try to keep this in perspective for the people who are paying attention at home and here, and I don't want to give, get into numbers because it's very difficult to talk numbers when you don't have them up on the screen, but just a couple of things. When you look at our budget and, and over the last 10 years, at least for this district, our wages have gone up total dollars about 1% per year. So, I'd have to say, I think that's pretty good management. We did a lot of things over the years that helped contribute to that, but at the same time, our total wages, for the, for the most part, have gone up about 1% a year. And I'm talking about over the last 10 to 11 years. Our, Dave mentioned and partially, in part, thanks to Mrs. Spade, our medical benefits have basically, in the last 10 years, stayed even, cost-wise, give or take, but they've been, so we're basically paying money for medical benefits that we paid 10 years ago. I don't know if, if you can say that as individuals, where your costs are, but as far as a district goes, we've, we've, I think we've kept those under wraps fairly well. The killer here that stands out every year and it just really enrages me, to say the least, is over a 10-year period, our, the cost of retirement by the state for this district has gone up 700%. 700% in 10 years. I mean, that's, I don't think, I don't think my calculator goes up that high. And it really is something that, again, I just want to make this clear, at least I believe this and I believe my fellow board members agree with this. This is not anything against people who are in the system. It's just that we have been trying to get our state legislature and, and those who are monitoring, administering these kinds of, to look at this problem. This problem is not going away. It's getting worse as we speak and it continues to get worse. And so, as a, as a matter of looking at these retirement costs is at 700% over 10 years, that's beyond outrageous, to put it mildly. You know, and the second item too is, I don't know how long it's been and maybe, Dave, you can help me with this. It must have been 10 years since the county has refused to reassess properties for their value. At least they have, I'll use the word refuse. I don't know if that's the proper word.
Last reassessment was in 2012.
Okay, so it's been a long time and, and that has really hurt, at least, not, I'm not even speaking on behalf of North Hills. I think it's for all municipalities and specifically, school districts, that we've had, really, from my perspective, I think the county has dropped the ball on this reassessment issue and it's, to me, I just don't agree with it. I think it's something that has to be looked at and it's easy for them to, to suggest that they haven't raised taxes for years and years and years, but they haven't done their part to help municipalities and districts out when it comes to property assessment. So, I, I just bring those two things up because it's just, every year, this budget, we're not the only district, it just gets more difficult and more difficult and it's just trying to bring all these things together, but when you, when you start to look at these numbers, you've got two items that just, just scream at you and obviously, the one is the retirement and, and that's, something has to be addressed there. We're certainly, and I don't see any end in sight to that. It just appears that that's going to go on forever. And the fact that we have way out-of-date assessment values throughout the county and this district has, all school district, all municipalities have no authority to do anything about that with regards to assessment values, other than challenge some and that's, sometimes we have to do that, but, but those are small numbers comparatively speaking, so. Okay, I'm off my soapbox. Dr. Knowles?
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of points I'm going to get on my soapbox now, just to follow up on a few things that Mr. Hall talked about and some questions that I think have come up from board members as we've been discussing the budget in the past. The first thing is, Dr. Manarino is really famous for saying, needs versus what, what we need to have and what's nice to have. And I think that we've, here we have a budget that does reflect what our students need. This is not a budget that is built on nice-to-haves or, you know, let's, let's just see how much we can add. This is built from what is, that we actually need so that, you know, we, when we do have to ask for an increase from the taxpayers, we're asking for the smallest increase that we can to be responsible to the taxpayers and also to be responsible for our students and make sure that they have what they need, we keep our district strong, we keep our community strong. So, the Finance Committee met with Mr. Moos, Dr. Manarino. We've seen notebooks and line budgets, Kathy, if you want to see those notebooks, there's, there's plenty of them up there. So, we've looked at these in real detail and, and as I think it's our responsibility to. And, you know, I'm satisfied that this is really a budget based on needs. That's the first point. Second point is, I want to follow up on what Mr. Hall said about the impact to the homeowners. When you really take everything into consideration, we're really looking at an increase of about a dollar a week. And, you know, it's really difficult to ask for any tax increase, but I think that it's a, an investment that is paying off for our district and it's something that I hope that homeowners will feel that it's a responsible thing to do to support the education. We're still going to have that sixth lowest tax rate in Allegheny County, even after the increase that Mr. Hall showed you, five, okay, down, so we're down to the, even with the increase, we've got the fifth lowest tax base in Allegheny County.
Well, that depends on what everybody else does.
Okay. As of, based on the information we have right now, which is all we, we can note, right? But, when I think about that and then I think about where we rank in Allegheny County in terms of the quality of our education, we've got taxes down here and we've got educational quality up here by almost any ranking. And so, that, you know, to me, I think says something about how hard folks work in this district to, you know, try to make, make that happen and to meet the needs of the district, the students and the homeowners. But it also, to me, explains why we're, why we have some of the budget challenges that we do, because this is a district that people want to move into. And I want to go back and just remind everybody, when, as Mr. Hall showed you, with the growth in personnel, that's our biggest cost increase and if you think about our enrollment, which we've talked a lot about the move to sixth grade, our largest class right now is kindergarten across the district and our smallest is 11th grade. So, if you think about that, over time, this, you know, those large class sizes are going to move through. So, you are seeing some growth in elementary staffing. And so, that's something that we were going to need for sixth grade when they moved to the Hilltop. Some of it we're seeing now, just based on enrollment. So, I think this is going to smooth out some of that investment, that those of you who were here when we talked about, we were going to need to invest in some more teachers as we moved sixth grade to the Hilltop. We're already seeing some of that now, next year. So, that's going to smooth some of those costs out over a couple of year period, which I think is actually kind of helpful.
I have a question.
Not that we planned it that way, but I think that's the way it's working out from the enrollment. Last piece is that at the same time as we've been adding teachers, we've been streamlining administration costs. When I look back, a couple of years ago, we had three assistant superintendents, we have one, we have two fewer director-level positions than we did a few years ago. So, I really want to commend the administration for working hard and looking at ways to, you know, rethink how we get things done and to really make sure that we are putting those resources in the classroom. So, again, that's, that's a, just another point that I think it's important for people to know that that's what we've been working on. And finally, and this is my last soapbox point here, is what Mr. Nudi talked about with the legislative agenda. I mean, if you think about this tax increase, it's a million-dollar tax increase. If we had some help from the legislature and that we were not having to pay double for cyber charter schools, there was a million dollars right there. So, we can't control the fact that we have to pay that subsidy, but we can lobby the legislature and try to get them to give us some relief. We offer a quality online school here in our district. So, students and families who want a quality online school have that option. What we're objecting to is paying double for it and sending that off to cyber charter school tuition. So, we are, there is a, we have a motion, we already have one motion. I have another motion at the end of the Finance Presentation that's related to that. And we're also asking you as taxpayers and parents and to help us, because it annoys me as a taxpayer to pay double for that and to see that money going in that direction. So, as individual, not just the lobbying from the board, I think it would help if residents and, and parents are willing to lobby as well. And we're going to put some things on the website next week. We'll have some links to some of the communications that we're sending out and some information as to how you can contact your legislatures, legislators, and I hope that you will seriously think about doing that, because that's something that we can do as a community, but there's only so much that we can do as a school board. So, now I'm off my soapbox.
Okay. Ellie, I know Kathy, but go ahead. Kathy, can you hear me, Kathy?
Yeah.
Okay, did you have a comment?
I have two things.
Go ahead.
Number one, I may have missed this. If I did, I apologize. In regard to us putting the sixth grade up in the middle school, how many teachers are we hiring this year, new ones?
There's four that, with the special area teachers, that we need to staff the K6 environment this year. Those four would be need to staff the sixth grade at the middle school. So, the, we're hiring four this year that ultimately, once we work out the details of transfers, that will be transferred to the middle school along with the sixth graders.
Okay, that's number one. Number two, in regard to Dr. Knowles discussing briefly about the cyber charter school funding reform, it's going to be on the website, which I hope everybody will take the opportunity, print it and send it in. In fact, it would be nice if maybe if they would get it up to the senior high and our new PR girl can send them over together, so we can actually see how many. I would also like to see if we could print copies up and give them to the elementary PTA presidents that they could distribute at their meetings, encouraging elementary parents to fill them out, sign them and we can send them in. I would like to see North Hills having the most letters sent in behalf of this. And the more people we reach, the better off I think we'll be. I'd like to see that.
Thank you, Kathy. Ellie?
I just had a clarification question for Mr. Hall, based on what you said, Ed. Our Peters contribution, aren't we reaching the point where it's going to start leveling out and then going down again?
It's going to continue to increase slightly for the next.
Five years.
At least five years and then it's going to basically plateau for a generation.
Right.
Before it ever starts to decrease.
But our rate of increase has dropped significantly from where we were.
Yes, the rate of increase has definitely dropped. I mean, the increases now are in the 3 and 4% range, whereas before, they were in the 18, 20, 25% range. But obviously, that's a smaller percentage on a much higher base.
Right.
So, the actual physical number increase is still a pretty big number.
Which goes back to Mr. Wilgus' soapbox.
Thank you.
I, I had a question and I'm not a finance person, so this may be a silly question, but, you know, as, as a non-finance person, I see, you know, we're, we, our enrollment's increasing. We have so many more kids in the district, but we're not collecting any more, I mean, a subs, like a relatively amount of revenue from those, those homeowners and, you know, that doesn't make sense to me, but I, I know it makes sense to you, so I was hoping you can explain, like, why that discrepancy is.
In general, we're fairly well-built out as a district, as far as housing is concerned.
Right.
So, you're basically looking at demographic changes. You're looking at housing that was, maybe had children in it in the 80s.
Right.
And then had no children. Finally, those people are moving out, newer families are moving in with children.
Right.
So, you're getting a lot of that. You're also seeing a trend that seemed pretty clearly since 2008. Prior to 2008, people moved here, bought a house, started a family, raised their kids, got into school age and moved north.
Yeah.
Starting in 2008, with the housing crisis, as well as with all of our new elementary buildings, people simply quit moving north.
Yeah.
So, when their kids reached school age, they stayed here and now they're coming to our schools.
So, houses that formerly had, you know, families with no children now have children, but we don't have, I mean, we have some new housing, but we don't have enough to justify, like, the amount of increase that we have, whereas someone like North Allegheny, they're building all the time, so their increase is supported by additional houses where people are living. So, I mean, I think that's helpful, at least for me, to kind of wrap my head around, you know.
As Mr. Hall said, we're built out, so we've always been collecting the tax on that house.
Right.
Now, that house is sold to a family with children.
Four children.
Four children.
Yes.
Also, Sandy, too, you got to remember that the McCannas Crossing and that has really helped out North Allegheny with their revenue too.
Sure, yeah. I mean, we.
That whole area is growing.
Yeah.
Not just the housing.
Right.
Anybody else?
Okay, so with that, I want to just quickly remind everybody that we are asking for the vote tonight to pass this proposed final budget and it's the step into moving us to the final budget, which we need to have done by June 30th. So, we're, we do need a roll call vote for this, I believe, Mrs. Rigger.
If you'd like to take roll call vote for that, yes, absolutely. If you make your motion, we'll take the roll call vote.
So, I'm, I'm going to recommend, Mr. Wilgus, that we take the resolution separately before we move on to our.
For item number two?
Finance business, if that's okay with you. Does that make sense?
Is this for item number two, for the proposed?
For item number two?
Okay, sure.
Yep. So, if that, if that's okay with you, I'll make the reservation that the superintendent recommends and I so moved that the board approve Finance Item Two, the 2019-2020 proposed final budget.
Second.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
No.
No.
Ms. Cazera?
Yes.
Mrs. Mathis?
Yes.
Dr. Knowlish?
Yes.
Mr. Nudi?
No.
Mrs. Reed?
This is very hard for me. I've been really contemplating over this, and I have many concerns. Number one is that we know we have this increase this year. It's only going to increase again next year. I think we need to look to the future. I would like to see if we at least now stop spending till we get a handle on things to see what's going to happen and how we can regroup. But it has me a concern. Now, I hate to tell people this, it's against me, but I'm going to do it. I'm going to vote, yes, for the, it's a preliminary budget, so I'm going to vote yes, because I'm hoping in prior years, what we've done is we've all gone back to the table and even had some more cutting. And I think possibly if we put our heads together, we would be able to save some money in areas and bring this down. So, therefore, if it's only the preliminary, I'm going to vote yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Spade?
No.
Mr. Wilgus?
No.
The motion passes by a vote of five yea to four nay.
Mr. Wilgus, if I may, I would just like to maybe give a brief explanation of my no vote. First of all, as a preliminary, for me speaking, as, as voting on a preliminary budget, it would seem incongruous to me to vote one way on, on this and when the, when the vote comes up for the final budget, to vote just the opposite way, but that's just my opinion. Secondly, I think that in voting no for the preliminary budget, that's what does what Mrs. Reed had just suggested. It gives us the opportunity to go back and say, well, okay, now, are there any other options open to us? Because I'm not thoroughly convinced that we have pursued all of the options that might be available to us. Secondly, or thirdly, when I look at the employee contributions, they go from roughly 34.29, for Peasars, 34.29% to 36.30% over the next five years. That is not a small increase. So, here we are, attempting to balance our budget this year by borrowing from our fund balance and raising taxes, and guess what? Next year, we will be in the same position unless something magical happens. So, I think we need to have a thorough discussion, and again, this is just my personal opinion, as to what the options are. Maybe there are no options other than what we're doing, but I don't, I haven't been convinced that we've thoroughly discussed that. We still have time. We have until, I guess, the end of June in order to pass the final budget or whatever the date in June is.
Yeah, we need to talk, get back to the table on this. Done in prior years.
Yes, I'm agreeing with you, Mrs. Reed, because I think in every year, we do, this is sort of customary for us. This is where we think we are now, things can change. You know, we can still, we still continue to look at it. I know there is one more Public Budget Committee meeting coming up. You know, if folks are able to attend that, I believe that is, what is the date, Mr. Hall?
We've got to look to the future.
I don't recall.
Okay, I was just going to say there, but my point
16th of May?
The 16th of May. So, my point was that just, just every, this year, just like every year, there's still ongoing conversations. So, you know, that, those conversations will continue to happen.
Thank you. I guess we can move on now to the other items. Thanks.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, I, I wanted to clarify, we had some Board members attend a Finance Committee meeting, and I think you did go over line by line
Yeah.
The budget. And I was, you know, wondering what your thoughts were on, on having done that, because, I mean, it seems to me a little, like, after having four Public Budget Committee meetings or three so far, it seems a little, you know, late in the game to, you know, now, you know, after we approved moving the sixth grade to the middle school and after we, you know, approved the various things that I think we need to continue our programs in their current state, to now say, you know, our budget is not possible, or, you know, there's problems with our budget and we need to reconsider. So, maybe you could talk a little bit about that meeting that you, that your committee had?
Well, you know, personally, I'm convinced that, you know, we do, we are at the needs level, that this is meeting the needs. But, you know, I also recognize, you know, we've got nine Board members, everybody has questions, maybe some folks haven't yet satisfied themselves that that's the case. So, we do have the, we do have the budget books. Any Board members, welcome to go and take a look through those. You know, and I think that, you know, when, when we have made adjustments in the past, I think there have been one or two years, it's really been pretty minor, because it's had to do with changes in state or changes in things that, you know, maybe came in, looked like there was a timing difference in some things. So, I, I personally think that any adjustments are going to be minor unless we're willing to, you know, really start questioning, you know, some of the philosophies that we've, that we've built the budget upon. And that's, you know, that's a bigger question.
That's absolutely a bigger question, and that's my concern, is that we, we can't at this time say, you know, we can make minor changes, sure, but if we're talking about changing any sort of, you know, cutting programs, I, I mean, I don't think that's the kind of thing we can entertain at this stage of the game.
I agree.
I just
I think anybody, I haven't heard anybody recommending cutting programs.
Well, I'm not sure, I understand, but I'm not sure where else the money would come from, is, I guess, my concern right now.
Well, there are some various areas we could look at. Transportation's very high. I think we need to take a look at that. There, maybe there's some areas that these booster clubs can help support the transportation. I don't know. We need to look at it. Possibly, this would be the year we would have to put a hold on purchasing new uniforms for one year. You know, you've got to take a look at everything.
I agree, Mrs. Reed. It is my intention, and I've done this before, and I'm going to do it now, I'm, I, I believe that budget is probably 300 pages, and I'm going to go through every page. I'm going to go through every page. So, I, before the next, I do plan on taking that time to do that, so I'll be send me lunch and dinner, but No, seriously, though, I, I do, it's my intention to go through every page of that budget, to look where we are and to hopefully have some recommendations if there are any, so. Mr. Nudi?
My biggest issue is, my principle is that I would never, okay, look, use fund balance to alleviate a tax increase. However, looking down the road, I may be changing my philosophy on that and maybe using fund balance to kind of alleviate the tax increase.
Okay, anybody else?
Look at all areas we can discuss.
I agree, Mrs. Reed.
You know, I hate to stupid, but I have to say it. This year is different, because a lot of this, though, to be quite honest with you, is political. Everybody that's running for office voted no. Us that aren't running, that have nothing to lose, we voted yes. So, we all have to come to some sort of agreement here, and I think we can do it if we put our heads together and talk sensibly.
I agree. Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Okay, we could, we could go ahead and move on there, Dr. Knowlish.
Okay, now, I know everybody would wish that we're done with finance at this point, but the bad news is we're not. Although, although hopefully the last, the next part of it is going to be a little bit easier. We do have some routine business that we can take as a group, so let me go through those and then if we have any questions. So, we're going to start off, we have general fund bills that we need to pay, item number three. Item number four is our construction fund bills, and that is the, I believe, the last bill that we have for the Westview Capture Fund, the construction that we did earlier this year, the Capture Vestibule. Food service fund bills, the budget transfers, our payroll for the month of April 2019. And those are our routine things. The two kind of non-routine things is there was a performance audit by the Department of the Auditor General for the period of July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2017. And that is something that, you know, happens on a regular basis, and they, it's not a financial audit, they, they're looking at things like how we collect and report non-resident student data, our school construction and facilities reimbursement, administrative separations, bus driver requirements, and best practices in the area of school safety. Those were the topics for this year's performance audit. And the findings were that the district performed adequately in all areas, with the exception of one finding. It was determined that the district incorrectly reported non-resident data to PDE, resulting in an overpayment of, to the district in the amount of $117,354. And that was over a four-year period. It represented some students who were incorrectly classified for four years in a row. So, over the time, it, it sounds like it was a lot of students that were not classified, but it was a couple students multiplied by four years. So, the corrective action that we took was to reimburse that to PDE and to make some changes in our policies and procedures in terms of how we, the documentation and how we classify non-resident students. And that's, that typically is foster students who, it's a kind of, or in complex situations, and so that adds some additional levels of complexity for the caretakers and the district and the, and all of the agencies involved in that. And so, this was a good area for, to, for us to go through and to just clean up, not so much clean up, but to just strengthen the policies and procedures, just so that we, you know, we've corrected that. So, we are going to recommend that the Board accept that report, and all of the documents are, you can take a look at the district response that outlines in specific how we propose to correct that going future. Our new performance procedures handbook regarding non-resident foster students is also attached, as well as the Auditor General's actual report, so. And there's one more, which is the Resolution 2019-8, and that is supporting statewide cyber charter school funding reform. So, it's another related, it is related to the charter school funding issue that we talked about earlier, to reduce the double payments. This one is focusing on the special education tuition and the cyber charter school tuition, because in a nutshell, what's happening is that the amount that the state asks us to pay to cyber schools for students in special education is far higher than what we would spend to educate a student with special education in the district. So, there's
And we're putting that on the web?
Yeah, we'll have both of the, we'll have information on both of those reform bills out on the web. I think the, Mr. Nudi, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the other, the House bill and Senate bill might be a little further along than this one, but it's, it's still information that we want to get out there and, and get supported on. So, as part of our action tonight, we want to, we'd like to make a, a motion, as part of the motions, I'm going to ask that we approve this resolution also, which is the second piece of the charter school funding reform. And it is motion, it's Resolution 2019.8. So, unlike a lot of the other things we've done earlier in the, in the, in the evening where we have put these things on the agenda till next week, my agenda here is to actually ask for approval on these items so that we can move forward. So, the Superintendent recommends an ISO move that the Board approved Finance Items Three through Nine.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. We can now move on to Support Services. That would be Mr. Burnett.
Okay, just one item, and that is a list of school bus drivers, six to be exact, and they have already had their clearances and checked out by the, the transit company. So, I move that item one, under Support Services, be added to the Legislative Meeting Agenda for Approval.
I'll second.
Thank you. Before we close the meeting, are there any public comments on non-agenda items? If you would be kind enough to get to the podium, ma'am, and list your name and address for the record?
Hi, my name is Julie Matthews. I live on Jamaica Avenue in Westfield.
You say, is it Matthews?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Julie.
Seven weeks ago on
Excuse me, could you speak into the mic, please?
Seven, seven weeks ago on March 11th, I'm sorry. My daughter was hit by a car on her way to her bus stop. The person who hit her is an employee of the North Hill School District and was aware of the crosswalk and the bus stop.
Would it, would it be easier, if you have something written, do you, would it be easier for you if one of us read it or if somebody else read it for you? Is that, can we, can we do that for her?
Sure.
Can somebody else?
If you want, if you want to bring it over, I'll be glad to read it. If I don't say something correctly, just stop me. How about that? That's okay, take it down. It's okay. Okay, I'll just, seven weeks since the accident, 49 days ago on March 11th, 2019, my daughter was hit by a car on her way to her bus stop. You have, you have 12 years, was she 12 years old? Okay. The person who hit my daughter is an employee of the North Hill School District, aware of the crosswalk and bus stop. Thousands of cars travel Highland Road, I assume Highland Road, weekly with drivers who are not as aware of the students. I'm requesting the bus stops be taken off Highland Avenue to ensure safety of the students. What can I do? How can I encourage you? What will it take to ensure the safety of the students who bus stop, whose bus stop is on Highland? Is there, I don't know, Dave, I'm going to put you on, how many stops do we have on Highland? I'm familiar with the road, and it is a busy road, obviously.
Four, I believe.
There's four stops on Highland. Wow, okay. Okay, so what can I do? How can I encourage? What will it take to ensure the safety of students whose bus stop is on Highland? Thank you for doing the bus stop audit this summer. Does the audit include the safety or is it just an efficiency audit? Would that, Mr. Hall, would that, can I ask you that question?
It's about safety.
It is about safety.
Absolutely.
It's both safety and efficiency.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Does that include everything, Mr.? Okay. Yeah, I've
Obviously, we're sorry that this occurred, and we are absolutely looking into this to make sure that this does not happen to anybody. And that's, that's the part of the audit. That's the main focus of the audit.
And then, and then we'll, I assume we're still, is this out of our hands because of the accident, meaning is it, is it a police matter or anything like that or not?
I don't have the details
Okay.
Of that part of the accident.
Okay. I was just trying to wonder, but we will obviously look into it and then if there's anything else we find out, and we'll take into consideration looking at Highland. Obviously, it's, I just don't know what the alternatives are at this point for moving, moving it off of Highland. Not having, but we'll find that out as we look at the, as we look at the audit and for the efficiencies and safety, specifically the safety, for sure.
Julie, I just want to say I'm truly sorry that this happened to your daughter. As a mother, you know, my heart goes out to you, and I know how hard it is to come and speak in public, and I, I think it was really brave of you, and I really appreciate you bringing this to the Board's attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
And she is doing well right now, is that, yeah. Good.
Okay, good.
Good.
Thank you. Again, thank you for coming. We appreciate that. Any other comments? Does anybody else want to address the Board before we adjourn? Okay, I'll motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.
Thanks.